Okay, well, whenever we're live, Steve, we're good.
We shouldn't be.
All right, well, we'll call to order our planning commission work session for April 23rd of 2024, and we'll begin with the pledge led by Commissioner Bailey.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've never been that uncued.
All right, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the March 26th, 2024 work session minutes. Any discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve the March 26th meeting minutes.
Motion to approve and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, item two is approval of the April 9th, 2024 regular meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve April 9th minutes.
Motion to approve.
I'll say.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, discussion on commercial mixed use for the 2023 general plan.
It's not on it, but from it. I'm gonna share. Okay, and I'm sorry about the size of the packet and kind of, there was a lot of information, but I know we'd looked at, or at least I had looked at, five different cities that have some sort of mixed use going on. And so I wanted to provide you kind of their code, which zone allows what, and so on and so on. Two cities, I believe it was, that are very similar to what our Chapter 13 mixed-use code looks like. So it's, you'll kind of see a familiarity to it, and then you've got the three others that are kind of the old style, where our Chapter 17 has just, here's the uses and here's all the zones allowed in. So the first is Centerville, or not Centerville, Clearfield. The first couple pages are, what they've got is just showing you-
Steve, can I ask a question? So we're kind of primarily looking 3500-ish?
3500, there are a few CC zones on 19, but they're north of us right now. So there are the commercials, commercially have on 19, like this Chevron that's just right here, the car dealership is all CC. So we're kind of looking community commercial zones, but majority of it's on 35 and Midland.
I'm just kind of thinking through, so as we go through this, we're-
But I think even the ones off of 19 are very similar to 35, you know? I don't, I don't think they're gonna be a downtown-type development. Anywho, just kind of going through, so Clearfield's got it kind of broken out different ways, so you kind of get an idea of what style of buildings there are already that are, when they talk about in the zone of the town, town mixed-use commerce. So the reason why I included it is it allows for just residential or townhomes along with commercial-type buildings. And then you've got the town neighborhood, which is, allows for what they call a garden-townhome style. So you've got buildings surrounding some sort of middle garden. There are commercial mixed, or residential on top, and then townhomes. And then there are urban mixed residential, has the five different styles of buildings. Again, all residential, townhomes, or kind of a mix of everything. And then there are other, the urban core, which allows for just residential or the mixtures. So when you start looking at it, well, I highlighted it, but apparently it didn't work. You've got within, there you go. It allows for residential in these particular zones, the D meaning it's more of a, either one. It's on design standards, which is very similar to ours. We have, we have some design standards that people have to abide by, usually it's something different or special. Insufficient rain for all those, okay. The other zones, permitted uses, again, I just want to highlight the residential. Apparently it's not gonna let me over-highlight it. Oh, there we go. That's a straight line.
Well, he found the liquor store.
But again, those zones, where it says P, will, later on, we'll find out that it allows for residential on the main floor and everything above. Where it says U, residential's allowed on the upper floors only. And if we go back, you know, the D, again, it's, it's got some design standards you have to meet, but there's a couple of zones that allow for residential only. Now, I'm not saying we turn our community commercial zones into 100% residential. I just want to show you that some of these, in Clearfield and South Ogden, you'll see that they have mixes. You could do one type of building up front, and then anything behind, or a distance back, you could do just residential. And that's why I kind of went to Clearfield. So again, the building types, so you've got the core, the multifamily, the townhomes, getting a little better, drawing straight lines, and the courtyard. This is a little harder to see, so we'll, we'll try to zoom in if we can. That's not what I wanted. It's not letting me zoom. Going backwards. But down here in the ground story, you've got residential, office, retail, residential, residential, and anything on the above stories. So those zones allow for 100% residential in the buildings. And going on, same thing, residential alone, or residential or retail. So again, you're, you're having different building types allow for different things in the zones. Okay. Now, this does not like me today. Well, okay, well, let me stop sharing for a second. See if I can find it again.
It's on the documents you sent us, right?
Yeah.
You can talk to the screen.
Well, I, I at least want the, those who might be watching to be able to follow along. Anywho, in Farmington, again, you'll kind of see the change in style. So this is what our Chapter 17 kind of looks like, just listed uses, what zone those are allowed in. So I've highlighted medium-density residential and high-density residential. And the two zones are mainly what's around their frontrunner station and Farmington Station that's going on. So the TMU is more the transit-oriented, and the RMU is more residential mixed use. So when you get beyond the frontrunner station, where you're seeing just more apartment buildings and stuff, those are where the zones are there. South Ogden, it's a little broken up, but it's similar in style of ours. It has the building types, so you can see storefront type of building. And then ground floor is any permitted use, and residential is a permitted use on the ground floor. Again, in a general stoop-type building, ground floors are all floors or any permitted uses. Row buildings allows for residential, office, craftsmen's types, type stuff. Then you get to Ogden, which is, they've got a lot of downtown-type mixed-use zones. So they're an old style ordinance-wise, but an old style of, pretty much, you can live and work and everything all in the same building. That's how they've been since they started. The H25 is just historic 25th Street. So you can kind of see some of the zones. The CM, or CMU and the CET is basically downtown, mixed-use entertainment. Can't remember what the C9 stood for, but again, most of it's in their downtown high-density area. So residential, when you start looking, yes, they, they allow for live-work units on 25th Street. There's a few of those buildings that have rental, you can own the home above and a place down below. They've got medium, or mixed-use residential in all four zones, multifamily residential in all four zones, but no single-family or two-family type dwellings in those zones. So it's, again, a very mixed-use type development, but that's kind of what Ogden, Downtown Salt Lake, Provo, they're, even Logan are like. South Salt Lake is just another city that I wanted to look at, and they do allow, as conditional uses, multifamily and townhome development in their townhome overlay zone. Woo, imagine that. So most of this is just so you guys have an idea of what's out there. But again, I'm not, I'm not imagining or envisioning 3500 West being 100% residential. So I wanted to get your guys' thoughts before I provide mine.
So you want to make it all commercial, that's what you're saying?
No, because that's kind of what our downtown is. Our downtown is lower-level, main floor has to be commercial, then you can do what you want on the upper floors. I think this one needs to be a little different. So not every building. So if I had one parcel and two buildings, both buildings have to have commercial on the main floor of downtown.
I did like the idea, I think, in Clearfield and kind of what you said, that the front-facing, like if you're facing the main road, it should be, you know, commercial style, and then whatever's behind it, fine, you know? Or if it's on a side street, like the last townhome, you know, guy that proposed, I think that's fine in that sort of zone, because like you said, there's not really any, it's not a good frontage, you know, for commercial-type business. So I did like that, but I think you said it's already kind of in our permitted uses or something, or like, as long as the front's behind, it's fine, or is it?
Yeah, right now, this, we're making this zone up.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So that's kind of what we're, we're doing, is the general plan called for commercial mixed use, but it didn't describe exactly what that should be. So that's kind of where I'm, I'm starting the discussion, you know?
Yeah.
What do you guys envision? I mean, I, you're along the same lines, I think, up against 3500 West, any building, commercial on the main floor, residential above. But say you're, and just throwing numbers out, 75 feet, 100 feet from back of curb of 35, does it really need to be commercial? Can it all be residential once you're that 100 feet back?
Yeah, I think that works good on 3500, just because, I mean, I'm pretty much on both sides. It's all residential, and would kind of create that transition slash buffer that we always try to provide.
Yeah, I mean, they're widening 35, it's, it's already a major transit thoroughfare. Nobody's gonna want any residential along that length of 35. I mean, there's gonna need to be something that fits that, for sure. Well, that's where I think we have an opportunity.
Right.
If we envision this for the future, we have an opportunity to create that commercial-
And make it wider.
Along that corridor, and I, I think the housing can be a component to that. I know, obviously, we need housing, and I don't mind going higher or back behind, but I think that frontage on 3500, I think the vision should be commercial.
Absolutely.
And I don't think council's gonna want to get rid of commercial.
Yeah.
I just don't think it needs to be like our downtown, where everything, main floor is 100% commercial. I think there should be some sort of barrier between a commercial building with residential and the single-family homes that are generally lining those back signs.
And I don't envision this going to the moon either, I mean, I, I think it's-
Well, we could start with 12 stories and see where we go.
I was thinking 16.
If you want to start, yeah.
And I don't envision this being, you know, 10 stories, five stories, you know, I'm thinking probably three.
Commercial right now allows for 40-foot building. I don't think it needs to be any taller than that.
And a house is 35, so I mean, we're right in that same, just so that we can kind of visualize the, you know, 40 sounds, sounds big, but when you put it in perspective, that's really not.
You've got a, what, a three-story townhome, and that's about 35, 37 feet tall. So you're not really 40 feet, you're not restricting a lot, but you're not saying, I want massive buildings.
But that's, that's the most you'll get, is three stories with a 40-foot.
Yeah, but you might get an apartment building that wants to go four stories, but generally, they're gonna be a flat roof, so it helps, or most townhomes, it's pitched, so you can have some variety.
I think that works.
But I, you know, I don't want to speak for you, that's just kind of what I was thinking, but I want to kind of get your guys' thoughts, or is there a distance back? Is there certain requirements? Is there architectural standards you want? Do you want it the same as downtown, be more aerospace in design? Or change it up to just kind of the typical brick, rock, stucco? Or do we allow a variety of materials like downtown, where you can have metal, you can have?
I would say, I don't know that it needs to be as strict as the downtown area, because you're there with the base, you know, with the museum, you were kind of looking for a certain aesthetic there, but all we got on 3500 West, I think you'd be a little more flexible and not as rigid.
Yeah.
Well, I know our original mixed-use code had a, another design standard that was more kind of what we have today in our commercial zones, is brick, rock, stone, that kind of stuff, but we kind of took it out, because most of downtown, we wanted to keep it, the aerospace design. But we could, you know, definitely bring it back if that's kind of something more typical, but metal.
Make it an option, but I don't, I don't know that I-
Because some of the metal actually looks pretty nice.
It does look really nice.
As long as it's not like the corrugated.
Does she, the 711 on Midland and 4000?
Unless it's designed like a silo.
We're talking architectural, like metal metallics.
But the 711 on Midland and 4000 actually has some corrugated metal in it. And I thought it was a great breakup, even though metal's not allowed, you guys approved it. You stamped it anyway. Not, not saying let's have corrugated metal, but it's some sort of shiny flag.
What I don't want is a metal shed, let's, all the same, like-
But we could do that, you know, the 80/20, 80% of it's brick, stone, or rock, and then the 20% could be, and then list a variety of materials.
I kind of want to discourage also just boxy, flat, like, I want-
Is it breaking a facade every so many feet?
Yeah, I want to break the facade.
Yeah, our code fires at every so many feet, you have a vertical break.
So I think anything we, when we put something in there, anything we can do to do that.
I won't change that. We'll keep that in.
That's 30 feet, isn't it, Steve?
And the commercial zone, the mixed-use zone, it varies between 30 and 50.
Especially if we're allowing, like, commercial versus, I mean, usually, if someone does commercial, they do do something different than on the-
So there's a, you know where the Clearfield Library is?
I don't know what to do.
Well, you're gonna have to go down there.
Apparently you.
I'm trying to think if I've been down there. Yeah, they probably have pictures if it's new.
Hey, I didn't tell you to put it up there.
I could've just gone to Google Maps.
I just had to share my screen. I forgot that I wasn't-
Let's see here.
But I'll spare you the moving of it on end.
But it's a cool effect.
Wow. I'm really having troubles here today. I called something, I lost everything.
Right.
Well, it went to another screen, and I'm not sure what screen it went to. Anybody go to computers? There's no way I'm stepping into that one. I'm trying to tell it to just duplicate my screen, but-
It could crack out of Brody.
Come on up here, buddy.
And so what are you trying to do?
Well, when you click on this one, it's over here somewhere, so I'm trying to- You would think that would work.
And did you minimize it? Which one were you trying to?
That one. No? Let's just close it, maybe I can open it up.
It's in the E300.
There you go, just had to talk about the library.
I just had to say, I haven't seen that.
Well, they've got a development-
It's all those kickback flats.
That's how they are down in St. Edward.
It feels very private.
Tell you what I was saying about the library.
Well, the library's got a couple of different, right next to it is a box-style building, but they have patios that protrude out. Then across the street, they've got more of the old, kind of the typical townhome style that's got, you know, kind of little ins and outs that's going up, you know, throughout the building. So if you get a chance, drive down there, I'm not saying those are the best-looking buildings ever, but most developers, and Jason can felt, can attest to this, they want to be as simple as they can and still meet the code.
Right.
They're not gonna, 90% of them aren't gonna go above and beyond.
Yeah.
Still not too nice.
There's a few that will do that, but most of them don't. It's like, whatever, it just keeps going right to the other one. You know what I'm saying, duplicate? I don't know.
I'm just saying, like, I don't love how Clinton has theirs just flat.
Well, Clinton doesn't have a mixed-use-
Yeah, so I'm just saying, I just don't want that.
Theirs is every 30 feet, there's supposed to be some sort of break. I know, because I wrote most of that code.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's gonna have changed in the last 12 years.
I mean, it's nice and new.
That's the library.
Oh, yeah, I saw, yeah, I looked it up on my-
The apartment buildings next to it, I don't know what they're called. The library's a great example of aerospace.
Yeah.
The fire station's being built across the street from the library. I mean, it has a roofline that projects out about 20 feet to an angle. Pretty cool. So if we can get people to do that downtown. So we digressed, so back to materials and stuff, just kind of the regular, typical, and then 20% can be, and we can list a bunch of materials, and that'll be in one of them.
Yeah, I like that.
Anything else? Heights, 40 feet, 50 feet?
Let's go 45.
I wouldn't want to go any higher than 50, probably, for sure.
Especially when it's right next to-
Residential, backyard.
Like I said, the commercial right now is 40.
Yeah.
I, you know, people could have built 40-foot-tall buildings and, you know, had nothing, or couldn't do anything about it.
I mean, aren't some houses that tall anywhere?
No, can't be tall, 35.
Okay, I was thinking it was some of them.
Depending on which definition of which they were built.
Okay.
What you want to avoid is that, when you're driving down the road, creating this canyon-
Right.
Exactly.
Effect.
Yeah.
In those smaller areas, where the, I mean, when you're talking about 1900, we've got a 100-foot-wide road.
Yeah.
Well, 35's gonna be-
35's gonna be pretty good-sized when it's still- But yeah, I think you're on something there.
When you're driving down, you know, through Clearfield on Main Street, they're really pushing that, I mean, they've done a good job of developing, redeveloping that area. But it kind of feels that way now, although when you drive through there, it's, you got walls on-
Yeah, urban, urban jungle. Well, yeah, so that's what all the young kids want, right?
We want shops, but I don't want a- Straight wall, unless it's a climbing wall, isn't it?
Somewhere that's not 2500 feet long.
Again, the buildings aren't gonna be 100 feet wide and long, and, you know, there'll be breakups, there'll be- So.
That'll be like one and a half.
I just need to do that, even if there's a different material, it still looks, you know?
And we get down to the details.
Yeah.
Maybe we could go higher than there, because nobody could play that.
Well, a lot of those are blocking the view, parking into the, the structure.
I can't see a dirt field anymore.
So 40 feet, how far back could we go before I can do just residential?
What is a typical commercial space? I mean-
But I think when we looked at before, those lots were pretty, like, the long stretch.
Well, there's only, there's only like eight that are that deep, the rest of them are pretty shallow.
So it only apply in probably those ones?
It'll apply to probably two dozen, depending.
On those short lots, how far are those back?
I'd have to go work.
I was gonna say, maybe you make that kind of like a cut-off.
I would try it, but it might go to another screen and then-
I think we also have to set a vision here, regardless of what's there now, because this may be things that over time change those areas a little bit. And that's where if you have good, solid code in place, then whatever happens if it stays the current makeup, then great, it works. If somebody wanted to buy all that out and change it, then-
So 100 feet, 80 feet? I'm doing some math, just one second.
You need a napkin. Back of the napkin, Matt.
I got it. He's got a napkin tat, or app on his phone.
Do we have like a set standard normally, or is it just depending on each?
So if you have a structure, a reasonable-sized structure up against the street, you'd need room for parking, at least one aisle with parking on both sides. So you're looking at least 100 feet, I'm thinking, to make that work. Otherwise, it's too small.
To allow the residential.
To allow a commercial to have, if you have, you know, something like, for example, a bottom-floor commercial, residential above, up at the street, and you need some parking behind, you're just doing some rough math, you need at least 100 feet to make that basic setup work.
So a minimum of 100? I mean, if the developer wants to go a little farther back with this commercial, we're not gonna say no.
Right.
But you have to have commercial on the main floor for the first 100 feet.
I don't know how you can make it work otherwise, but at least that way.
That gives an idea. I mean, even downtown, in the downtown east zone, the first 100 feet can only be 60 feet tall, and after that, go to 80. So even that, it's not like we're changing things. Anything else?
Would we also allow that they don't just have to put commercial on the bottom, like if they wanted two stories of commercial?
Well, yeah, the, the building next to the street can be all commercial, four stories, or- Well, yeah, the, the building next to the street can be all commercial, four stories, or a lot. Commercial on the main, residential on the. Kind of like they had. Commercial retail on the main and the.
Okay, I was just making sure. I mean, I figured since it's mixed use, I mean, I know they're getting.
Put me on Lila Farley's.
I mean, ideally, they really push the.
Only on the third floor.
For when I have my flying car.
Expensive build for a car wash to get cars out there.
So I was asking Ryan, have we had people approach Roy that they want to have this kind of a setup here? Like, they want to put a building in the base, or a business in the basement?
The main floor? Well, do you see all the developments going in downtown?
I do. It just seems like I see all this building everywhere and Roy just kind of gets skipped over. Because we, we are pretty built out.
The particular cities I picked have development going on right now because they allow for buildings to be one hundred percent residential. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, most developments have that component of commercial residential. The residential comes first.
Always.
They will build it as quick as they can get permits. The commercial always takes a little longer. So if you have, if you say, okay, you have three buildings and two of them are, you know, a hundred, two hundred feet back, the commercial may stay vacant for a little while, but they've got the residential built. So it's much easier for them. They're gonna start making money. You know, everybody wants to make money, so they'll be able to build a residential, rent them out, or sell them, or whatever. And then they'll get the commercial to come in a little bit later. Even in Clearfield, the one next to the library, the commercial stayed vacant for a year or so. Then you see small little mom and pop shops coming in, or, so the commercial's always lagging behind. So the concern I have with our downtown is we have to have, you have to have commercial on the main level, and a lot of them are like, I don't have it.
Well, that's why it only works in the kind of area we're talking about, where you have high traffic, where you have bus stops especially, where you have bus transit, where people, you get people walking.
And my hope is, because right now, if you want to catch a bus on thirty-five, you gotta wait an hour.
But that'll change.
One, one bus an hour is what it is right now. But as more people are living along that street, those buses will start coming more and more often. So not that I want to replenish the earth on residential on thirty-five hundred, so buses come. But I know Clinton's got, you know, stuff going on. It's, theirs is more horizontal mixed use than vertical. But they're, they're getting stuff. West Haven's, you know, gonna be getting stuff. Not in the near future, but they'll be getting stuff. So they're, you know, that road will start getting more and more transit oriented and get more things.
Now, will you remind me, the stuff over by where Dilly Dally's was, that was gonna be similar to this? Like office buildings or dental offices and then housing that never got built yet?
By Dilly Dally's?
Over there. Is this similar, like, the zoning and stuff? Would those be consistent? But they're different because it's the downtown and then the thirty-five hundred.
That building sits a hundred and fifty feet back, but it had to have commercial on the main level. There was no one hundred percent residential.
Oh, because the commercial's gonna be around the back of it.
Around, you know, on the main level and some up front. So theirs is kind of stuck.
I just couldn't remember.
Construction costs, materials have gone up, and they just haven't, they don't make it pencil out, so they're kind of on hold.
I just couldn't remember what that one was compared to this.
But I bet you if that building could have been one hundred percent residential, it'd be going up right now.
Well, I mean, a good example of that too is just over on Midland and Four Thousand. They put, I mean, the bill, the housing went in super quickly, but the businesses have been a slower gradual.
That was a whole ball of wax.
Well, because that ended up being lots of different scenarios before it got to that one.
It was supposed to be a theater once upon a time.
Is there any way, because I, I definitely want to preserve the commercial, right? But the problem is if you allow a hundred percent residential, then everybody just jumps on that and you lose all your commercial. Is there a way to allow some hundred percent residential without opening that floodgate?
Wouldn't it just be what we talked about where it's behind the hundred foot?
Well, but I'm talking just in general, because you can do the behind, right? That's one way. But I'm not opposed to some residential on that corridor. I just don't want to give up all of our commercial.
So like you have first floor commercial, then, like, kind of similar what we already have downtown, like that? Is that what you're thinking?
No, no, no. I'm saying, are, is there some way to do, where, you know, if you had a hundred lots and twenty of those could be a hundred percent residential, but the other eighty have to have the commercial.
The easiest and cleanest way is to create two zones. And have a commercial zone that runs a hundred, a hundred and fifty feet, and then multifamily on the, on the back side. If you keep it all one zone, one lot, then you're gonna have to write it that way that the first hundred feet has to be one hundred percent commercial or twenty percent or eighty percent of, you know, starts getting a little. I mean, I could look and see if there's code out there written that way.
Yeah, maybe I didn't explain that very well, because I'm not, I'm not in the mindset of zoning each lot individually. But just a way, because I just don't want to give up all the commercial. And if we say you can do a hundred percent residential. That's what you'll get. Well, that's what we'll get, like, the whole way, which is not what we.
And my vision is if the building's fronting, we'll have commercial.
Are you thinking, like, have you been over to Costco since they built those big apartments? Like, it's Costco up front in South Ogden. They have the Costco, then they have those huge apartment buildings all along and all along the other side. Yeah, and now they've lined the whole thing around the commercial with just, with just apartments. Is that kind of what you're thinking, like the?
What happened?
Not necessarily, because I think what.
No, I mean that it could be flexible that way.
Because what we kind of talked about, I think, works really well, right? Where you have the commercial on top, or a commercial on that on top, you'd have the residential behind. I'm even thinking, even on the street front, some, I just don't want to give it all up.
And I understand what you're saying. So let's say you've got ten lots, let's say two of them, they're entirely a residential building that you can put, but then we want the other eight, if I'm understanding you correctly, to be some kind of mixed use where you have commercial on the bottom. It might, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You could do it with percentages as well. I mean, of your floor space, you know, twenty percent has to be, and eighty percent has to be resident, can be residential, but fifteen percent, twenty percent, I think that's maybe even a little high. Because you don't want it looking like Main Street, Clearfield, all the way to, because that's what you'll get. And I don't think you want that. But Ryan is right. If you leave it open to, you can do a hundred percent residential, I think that's what you'll get.
Well, yeah, and again, that first hundred feet, it's, there's commercial involved.
Unless you were saying about the percentage part, say that you got, if he had two acres of frontage and he puts a business on the one acre and then apartment on the second acre next to his building, then that would, you'd be able to have a residential on that street.
So we're just talking along the street frontage, not necessarily in the back, a percentage of commercial?
I think Ryan's referring to, yeah.
I'm just, a discussion.
Well, no, I'm just trying to grasp what I need to.
Potentially.
Go look at.
I don't know. I'm thinking if you're on thirty-five, it should be more commercial. Because that's a main corridor, you know, and residential can go around behind. And plus, they're already putting in a ton of what, apartments or townhomes and those vacant fields next to it, right? So let's get some of those guys to come in, you know, where we have a commercial. That's what I would be saying.
And I'm just thinking outside the box here, because we're not, everywhere else around us is growing. We're not seeing anything on nineteen hundred. I don't know that this is gonna incentivize. I mean, I think you'll still see the other cities growing. Is that something that could bring in some of the residential growth and then the commercial follows a little quicker if there's residential there, or would, would that even?
I guess it depends on the.
I don't know if that makes sense. Sometimes I'm not real clear. My mind's thinking one thing, but.
Because the people would be there to support the business, kind of an idea?
That's what will drive it. Yeah, I'm just trying to think of how do we encourage a little bit of growth here in.
Well, I think especially if that becomes, if you're gonna have higher density housing, if you want to call that or whatever, people are going to want things within walking distance. And so I do think that that could potentially move the needle a little bit to encourage businesses to come and.
Still a little lost, so I think you drop. So here's thirty-five hundred west, here's those lots that are deep.
Yep.
And kind of what I was saying is, the first hundred feet, you'd have a commercial and residential, commercial building. So a commercial on the main level, and the next three could be whatever.
Or they could just do straight commercial if they wanted to not go with.
Right, and then after a hundred feet, it could be just one hundred percent residential. So what was your?
What if, is there a way to do exactly what we did? So, right, we've got that mix of commercial, but on the front of a percentage of it, allow just pure residential?
Oh, so say if I have these five lots and we say twenty percent of it has to be.
Exactly.
You could be residential, and this one could be all one hundred percent.
That's what I thought he built there, a building and then houses.
Residential mess.
That's what it's taught us.
Would that, my, my question is, is like, this kind of a thing isn't possible. And would it encourage, because if they could have a little bit more residential, does that encourage a little bit more growth and then the commercial comes in a little bit quicker?
It could. I mean, let me look and see what I can find ordinance wise. I mean, there's, planners don't make up things, they plagiarize. I don't know why schooling says you can't plagiarize anymore, because that's what everybody does. I'll look and see. I mean, there could be code out there that says, you know, eighty percent of this has to be commercial, the rest can be resi, you know.
I would still say that's maybe flip-flopped. I would say within the first hundred feet, there has to be a minimum component of commercial within that first hundred feet. After it, it can be a hundred percent residential, but within that first hundred feet, twenty percent at least has to be commercial. But that's what we're talking about, right? Yeah, I think we'd want a higher threshold of commercial.
The first hundred feet has to be. A certain percentage of, I mean, I think if we get main level commercial, and say there's five buildings, that's gonna be pretty good with four, three stories of residential above. But some of them may come and say, you know, I want a four story office building, no residential.
But you could do that because they've met the minimum.
But let me, let me see what I can find.
And I'm not stuck on a percentage. I'm just.
I'm thinking that's a way to make that work, you know. But let me see what I can find. If there's somebody out there that has a good code. We can definitely go take a look at it.
Aren't we always talking about, we want more businesses in Roy and more commercial stuff? So why give them kind of the option if we got one of our main corridors to say, oh, let's have some residential on one of the main streets? You know, everybody's always saying, oh, it's too crowded, there's too many people. I mean, you see every time somebody comes in, high density housing, someone was putting a new thing. Too much people, too much traffic. Okay, well.
Kids are gonna die.
Yeah, yeah, you know, schools going to hell, right? So if we have an opportunity here, then let's just try to keep it, you know, like, what commercial we have, let's use it mostly for commercial. That's what I would say.
Yeah, and I would say, show me the growth in Roy, even though we've done the mixed use on nineteen hundred. Well, I mean, the things that we're doing, I think, set a good vision. But the, the reality is everywhere else around us is growing. They're, they're getting the businesses, not Roy. Now, part of it may be who owns the property and, and things like that. And I, I think we've built a good plan to keep commercial, but I just don't see the growth. And so I'm just trying to think of what, what things, and that may be on the planning commission. You know, that's probably more city council and different things like that, but I'm just trying to think, what, what would be the, what would be the incentive to get somebody to come in? And if it takes giving up twenty or thirty percent of the commercial with residential, but then all of a sudden that leads people to come in with the commercial side, that, that may be a sacrifice that would be, be worth it. But otherwise, if it just stays commercial, I just don't, we're, we're gonna be twenty years before it grows. I, I see it potentially with, with, you know, Riverdale being, you know, all their frontage around Riverdale being commercially built out. Roy would be a natural overflow. What can we do to incentivize that? I mean, it all has to be redevelopment, but.
It's all I was gonna say. It just seems like, you know, it's almost a natural progression all the way from nineteen hundred. You got some residential, then it come, you know, down to Midland, and then it turns into a commercial corridor, and then it just bottlenecks into Roy, you know, and then there's residential, commercial, residential, commercial, and then you get a Clinton, you know, it's all, that, that's gonna be like a natural corridor because you take it all the way down to Syracuse, and then all you see then is commercial down there, kind of what they've done. You know, kind of ahead of the game of like, well, we're gonna keep growing, but we need people to stay here and shop here too. And I think there might be a, a place where we can do that. I think nineteen hundred maybe is a little bit different because there's a lot of older buildings there. It's kind of mishmash, hot podge together, not kind of like what, you know, we want it to be, but it still has the potential to be, you know.
Well, what was it that, I mean, Clearfield, just in the last ten years, that whole stretch along Main Street was almost completely redeveloped. What was it that, like, lit that flame over there? Because it just took off. I mean, it was, they had a new master plan, new form-based code. I think that's what sort of sparked it.
Well, you just swore.
At least in Roy. We're in, we're in good company here.
But I mean, we also have only had our general plan actually finished and doable for what, a year at the most? So, I mean, we're not, I mean, yeah, we wanted to see fast action. We also, they also hired someone at the city that's supposed to be focusing on that, so I mean, talk to Brody, I guess.
But what, do you know what kind of what spurred the Clearfield? I think that's a good.
Well, next to the library, that air just there, building caught on fire. Levelled the, the ground, and they were able to build. Now granted, that company moved to Roy, so I'm not sad about it, but they had vacant land sitting right across the street from their city hall, where the Davis, we were, Davis Health Department is.
Those were all commercial buildings.
Were old, commercial.
Used to play pool there.
Town, center town, or town center building was vacant or old buildings. So, but Clearfield's also purchased a lot of land. There was a mobile home park. They bought it for like twelve million dollars. We don't have that kind of money. So Clearfield just had a lot of redevelopment money that they could do things, to tear things down, to, to start building.
Okay, so that's the next question. Where do they get it? Because they're a bedroom community like we are.
Yeah, I, I don't know. Now granted, we've created three new CRAs. We just need things to be built to help get that money. And downtown will take one project.
Yep. Once one comes, another one's gonna fall.
One new project comes, everybody will be like, oh, wow, and then things will come.
And I think the road lining and stuff and the traffic, hopefully the congestion won't be as bad. That'd also be another driver. It's like, oh, now I actually want to go to nineteen hundred during rush hour to go get something to eat instead of like, yeah, I'm gonna go somewhere else.
Commercial brings in a lot more traffic.
Fifty-six hundred will change things as well when it's finally done.
I like the new portals personally.
I don't see fifty-six helping.
Well, I'm just saying that it's wide and.
Other than getting Hooper to look freeway quicker.
That ain't gonna help anything up along the nineteen hundred.
Well, you get more traffic there, so more business.
It's a good discussion, though.
Any, anything else? But I'll, I'll look at something code-wise, see what we can find.
I know that's kind of one of those wild hair thoughts, but.
Do we know when the widening is gonna happen on that road?
Which road?
Thirty-five hundred.
Uh, once fifty-six is done.
Three years ago, right?
They've, they've already been given a lot of money to start purchasing land.
Is this you got?
Well, I just also read that on my TSL about the sunset, eighteen hundred. Twenty-twenty-eight for fifty-six?
They need fifty-six done first before they do eighteen?
That'd be cool. Think I've done that quick. What's the timeframe on fifty-six to finish?
Twenty-twenty-five?
It's a, it's a new proj, project where they design it as they're building it. Usually they have the design done, you know exactly who, what, where, why, and how, and then they build it.
That's why they're just working randomly in locations instead of like a conference and playing.
That's why connects us coming to Roy.
So I, I, I think it's supposed to be done next year.
So I thought twenty-twenty-five.
Done?
Yeah.
They're moving pretty fast, I think. Doesn't seem like they're gonna move fast. All of a sudden. I don't drive on fifty-six hundred, so I don't know.
Good point. I stand corrected. I'm a more pessimistic about it, but.
You must live by fifty-six.
I don't.
But I think it's supposed to be twenty-twenty-five. I don't know if it's late summer, fall-ish.
That would be great.
Just know it got moved up before I rode it down.
Wonder if they're gonna put up any more of that wall between residential places? Wonder if they're gonna put up any more of that wall, it's residential places, no, just the little apartments there.
Oh, yeah, they put up some.
Anything else, code wise, I can start researching and putting together?
Any other thoughts?
Do we have a big meeting on the next one?
May fourteenth meeting has been canceled.
Can we put a liquor store down there?
Because it's the Star Wars holiday. I thought he said May fourth.
And depending on how quickly I can get all this put together, we may have a meeting at the end of May or may not. But June.
I saw what you did there, may or may not.
I will try to, June for sure, we'll have a, a meeting in the first of June, because we gotta tell Jason goodbye.
June is when you're done?
He's turned out. Now I'll be running for city council. Or mayor.
Mayor Jason.
He doesn't like kissing babies, so.
He does like their lollipops, so.
Um, yeah, so staff, or commissioners minute is the next item on the agenda. I don't have anything in particular, I think we kind of talked through a few of the things, any? Okay, we move to staff update, Steve?
I have really nothing.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Come on, Chris, we're waiting for it.
We're done. Yeah, you still got, you still got an hour.
Give me a sec, I got it, it's like nine hundred things to.
I do have something I want to share with you.
You can't even share a screen, you're saying you're trying to microphone?
I learned my lesson, Ryan.
I think his mic's on, but he's also got a recorder and his computer.